Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Finn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
And Councilmember Leoni.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of May 19th, 2015. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. If anyone would like to address an issue that's on the agenda, or if you would like to speak regarding a non-agenda item, please fill out a speaker request form which you can find in the lobby or from the city clerk, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. The first item on the agenda is a presentation, Spring Training 2015. Mr. Swinson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. We're very pleased to present a retrospective of the past spring training season in Peoria. As the council is well aware, we had a very successful season. We had outstanding attendance, we had new facilities for our fans to enjoy the game at the Peoria Sports Complex. And to make the presentation will be John Sefton and Chris Calcaterra.
Thank you, Carl, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. And to echo what Carl said, we had a fabulous spring training season. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Chris in just a moment because I want to take the opportunity to really recognize he and his team, Mike, Blake, Al. We really put an effort in this year with the improvements and the different components to the season. Their connection with the volunteers and the fans really made a difference. And so accolades to the team, and I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, John. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for having me here tonight to give you a brief background on spring training 2015. And there are so many words I can describe, I'll just use "wow" because I don't want to overdo myself, but it was a fantastic year and I want to kind of give you a brief history of basically what happened. I would like to acknowledge first and foremost our partners, and more importantly, our partnerships we have in Peoria. I think that's something that we take a lot of pride in and we do a lot of work to keep those partnerships fostered. Three years ago, we began our journey with the extension of team contracts, which then set off several triggers in a methodical approach to our sports complex improvements. The list of partners includes also not only the ones you see on the screen here, and our two team partners, and our Diamond Club nonprofit partner, but also the internal city departments, engineering, public works, police and fire, all without, at the table, we could not have had the amenities that we improved this offseason. This past year, however, was a culmination of those concepts turned into programs that were extremely successful for all patrons. The city's investment in stadium improvements, the uniqueness of the outcomes, and some robust offseason team roster moves led to our greatest year ever in Peoria in spring training. Peoria's been a model for two-team facilities since its inception in 1994, and I believe we will be for several years to come in many facets, being partnerships, our operations and maintenance, our tenant contracts, and our design and improvements in construction. But most importantly, Peoria Sports Complex is a community asset, and that's what we're all about. Let me tell you a little more about spring training 2015. We started the season off in the Cax League luncheon, where we hosted over 650 guests from like facilities around the valley. This was the largest Cax League luncheon to date, and it was very, it's our annual fundraiser for the Cax League Association, plus it was also a good opportunity to test run the new improvements at the stadium. We showcased our facility to our league counterparts and to those elected officials from around the valley. We conveyed the economic impact of the league annually to the state through a press conference at the end of the luncheon. We also, this season, we conducted the FMR Economic Impact Study that we'll have back this fall for 2015. So that's a fantastic opportunity with the numbers across the Cax League all up, and Peoria is, in a moment, I'll let you know, extremely up. We showed the new experiences and the future of stadium improvements and why we did what we did. Those ideas and concepts I mentioned earlier turned into realities in the left-field pavilion over the bullpen, which created a large new fan experience space for groups and catering opportunities. It was a highlight of the spring training season. It was also a highlight because it had shade. So it was a beautiful opportunity to have, come out in the ballpark and enjoy both aspects of Arizona sun as well as shaded, and not to mention, we added a new bar up in that area, so that helped draw in the folks as they walked around the facility. Another reality was the upper terrace. This is arguably the best seat in the house with access to shade, concession stand, bar, and restrooms, and an incredible view of the action on the field. Very popular season. The team store, an old team store was about 600 square feet, this new team store is 2,400 square feet, and you'll see shortly the improvements in revenue generation just by size and the amount of new fan base that we had this season. We also created the front door entrance. Peoria was known in the past for being very usable in the sense of type of events we hosted. We never really had a front door, so now we actually have a new gate entrance with our title on top of it, so when you come in, you know where you're at. And believe it or not, people walk up to the stadium still with tickets from other facilities, so it's a common practice sometimes. But we have also new gate, or new counters for ticket sales. Our capacity to get people in the ballpark is a lot faster and quicker, which means people are in the game enjoying themselves sooner. One of our strongest partnerships is the Peoria Diamond Club. And to understand this, there are a array of relationships around the Cax League facilities and partner with nonprofit organization. Our partnership is extremely strong, and it shows in the relationship and volunteer work that they provide. And here's just a small gamut of jobs that they do, a variety of jobs they do that they perform for us. One thing to keep in mind, all these folks that volunteer have interactions with patrons, and our guest experience is definitely raised the bar, if you will, and that's what I hear from most of our counterparts around the Cax League, that our volunteers add that whole experience to the spring training vibe. Also, the Diamond Club has an annual charity game. This year's charity game raised and recognized over $110,000 in revenues, plus this past season, we actually had an average of 168 volunteers per game. Now, when I say that, that's a number, but the reality is, when you have a season like we just had, and we have a five-degree above-average temperature and games in 90-degree heat, that really puts a perspective on it. I mean, our volunteers obviously have time to volunteer, are definitely in the category of being watchful and careful. I'm incredibly grateful and indebted to these folks for all that they do for us. A substantial note to put in perspective is, we parked 56,000 cars this season. Our highest amount prior to that was in the 40s, and it was the low 40s. So the work that they've done this year, given with the amount of obstacles and the heat and everything else, is quite amazing. They provided 5,222 game day shifts, which, all by volunteer labor. And at the direction of some of their staff, we are allowed to put them in areas, and this year, because we have new areas such as the pavilion and terrace, we utilize the volunteer staff to help us do customer service and ambassadors in those areas. This is really what spring training, when it comes down to the revenue and numbers. So this, all major categories for the spring training were significantly up. As a total, spring training revenues were up 37% from 2014 comparatively. A note for the number crunchers is that we were $1,811 from the $8 million mark. So it's by far one of the largest spring trainings revenues that we have ever seen, but from a Cax League perspective, this is a huge, huge increase, and none of our compadres saw this kind of increase in revenues. And if they are, they're not sharing it because they know that we did extremely well this year. Total sold tickets were over 206,000, which is up 28% from 2014. We had an additional 43,000 fans through turnstiles, which in reality is almost five-and-a-half additional games. Our average attendance is 7,700 per game, so we put that many folks through the same number of games this season than we did last. As an important note, we sold almost 22,000 gallons of beer, which we are very well-known for craft beer in our facility, so it's an opportunity for us to improve. We had 53,000 hot dogs were sold. And if this is the new normal, and I'm not sure it is, then we have positioned ourselves well as our strategic improvements moving forward through the next, you know, 18 years of our contract with the teams. We all should be very proud of that. Total two-team facilities really is a benchmark that we perform ourselves on against the Cax League facilities. The attendance demands are significant, obviously, across the valley during spring training, and with daily options, fans have a choice to make when attending a game or a venue. This season, we surpassed Campbell Black Ranch in a two-team comparison category, which is a huge obstacle. Campbell Black Ranch has been a new kid in the block, so to speak, in the West Valley, so it's very good to see us get our numbers back and surpass them. Cax League attendance as a whole, we saw our best year yet, as I mentioned, over 238,847 fans. We moved from fourth to second on a benchmark comparison against the league. We did this with slow and steady attendance, and what I mean by that, we didn't break any single game record attendances. And that is much better story in measuring our success, instead of having four or five games or above the 12,000 or 13,000 mark. We were consistently higher, eight, 9,000 games. We drew people in, gave them a great experience, and they came back. Couple of things coming up for 2016 that you're also aware of, but I want to just give you a quick rendition of, is the third base social seating expansion area. We have 600 seats on top of the social space and 150 approximately below in a multi-space, usable space throughout the year. During spring, we can utilize this for large group areas as well. The kids' zone also is currently under design for new kid-friendly amenities, which will also attract a new clientele to the stadium. We obviously have to bring kids to the stadium, but do we bring them there when they're, you know, underneath eight to 10, or six to eight, and now they have an opportunity to come out and enjoy a kid-friendly environment? Most importantly, in my, as I mentioned to kick off this presentation, we're a community asset. And I think one of the most things that, I was there for the Easter event, and I stood up on the terrace and had the best view. Quite frankly, there was 8,000 kids on the field, so I probably took the high road. But, you know, nine hours after we finished a Major League Baseball game on a Friday night, we had our Easter event on the field, and we had over 9,000 Easter egg hunters out there. So this is what this facility is about, and I think we all should be very proud of ourselves. We had a fantastic spring training. Look forward to next year and our team's return to the valley. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Congratulations on a great season. That's fabulous.
And I'd like to echo the comments that John Sefton made in the beginning. Chris, you did a fantastic job, you and your staff, as always, well-managed, well-run, you know, great spirit that you all bring every game, and all the time beforehand getting the stadium ready. And I know it was a little stressful this year with all the construction ending five minutes before the first pitch, I think. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are items listed with a C. They are considered routine by the city council or have been previously addressed by the council. They will be passed by one motion unless a member of the council requests that an item be removed from consent. Council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Councilmember Binzbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, if I may, like to request that we remove item C6, just for further clarification.
Any further items? All right, so is there a motion on the, yes?
I want to remove C7, again, just for a word of clarification.
Okay. Okay, so we will now vote on the consent agenda with the exception of items 6 and 7C. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It is unanimous. So we will now move to item 6C.
John Sefton will make a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council. This item, before you, for your consideration, is actually a code amendment, and it ties to our Community Services Department fees and charges. As outlined here, I've got a quick overview as to why we do this on pretty much an annual basis. So again, it's a code amendment within Chapter 2 of our city code, specifically addressing community services fees. And it is done because we have a council policy 1-11, and it pertains specifically to the community services recreation and pricing fees. In the policy, it addresses very specifically, and was adopted, I guess as important note, adopted in 2012, it sets the purpose of offering efficient professional services that improve the quality of life for the residents of Peoria and the community as a whole. It defines the procedure for review and direction for considerations. It defines the fees, costs, and demographic types. It establishes the pyramid pricing model, which is the crux of the whole process, and it establishes the cost recovery goals by program. This is a graphic that identifies the way that we put into effect the pricing as it's structured, and in essence illustrates a pricing philosophy on establishing fees that are commensurate with the benefit received for that program or activity, or potentially facility as well. As you'll see here in looking at the bottom layer, the community benefits most, and those prices or programs associated with that would receive a full subsidy or expect a 0% cost recovery. As you move up that right-hand side, you look at the different types of programs, and these are actually set within the policy, and we get to those types of programs that are included in the 100% or 100% plus cost recoveries. So it is all built on what it costs to offer programs and to maintain certain types of facilities. It is nationally recognized, and in fact was part of our accreditation. When we had the accreditation team out, they recognized this policy, how well it was crafted, and the fact that Mayor and Council had adopted this philosophy and adopted it as policy to help guide the pricing models for the programs associated in parks and recreation. So, as noted in your council communication, this year we have some slight increases in the AMPM program, summer rec camps, as well as an area for the advertisements and the Get Active brochure, which gives us a little bit of flexibility and a little bit of revenue to offer some advertisements within that program guide that goes out to 64,000 residents in Peoria. And with that, I'll certainly hope to answer any of your questions.
Any questions?
I would just like to say that I am really proud of this, of our pricing model. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it delivers the most services to our citizens in the most common sense way. You know, if somebody's taking line dancing, everyone in the city shouldn't have to compensate, you know, to cover that class. But if you've got teen rec programs or something like that, you know, you want to be able to offer that as a core service for, you know, for our citizens. So I'm really proud of this model. I appreciate it, and I think that it's a really good method for cost recovery. You know, we're not talking about profiting here, we're a city. We just want to recover the costs that are expended. So, thank you. I think it's really great.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion on item 6C?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. 6C passes unanimously, and move on to 7C.
And Chris Hockes, our planning and community development director, will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 7C is a request for the city council to accept a matching grant or accept a grant for up to $10,000 from the State Historic Preservation Office. The purpose of that grant would be to help fund the preparation of a National Register nomination for the Old Main Building. In my opinion, the Old Main Building is probably the most architecturally striking building in the city of Peoria, so I think what this does is, it helps develop the documentation and work with the Peoria School District to see about placing that on the National Register.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt?
Thank you, Chris. I wanted to bring this to attention because it's been years and years and years that different groups have worked to bring this designation to a very deserving old structure, I think the most beautiful building in Peoria. And this, a lot of work, as you know, has already been done. I really want to express my appreciation not only to you but to Melissa Sigmund, who's done really the yeoman's work on this. And it's just about ready to go, and we'll certainly let everybody know when it's passed and when that big, beautiful building is once and for all on the National Register of Historic Places. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item 7C?
So move.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Council, please vote. And that's unanimous. All right, we will now move on to new business. Next item on the agenda is 12R. This is a public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2016, 2017, water, wastewater, and reclaimed water rates and administrative fees.
Katie Gregory, our, excuse me, Katie Gregory, our deputy budget and finance director, will make the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Carl.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you this evening is the public hearing and adoption of the recommended utility rates for fiscal year 2016 and fiscal year 2017. As you recall, during the FY '16 budget study sessions, we provided an overview of the recently completed rate study and provided the recommendations for rate adjustments for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water rates for fiscal year '16 and '17. As a matter of process, just so you're aware, anytime we are bringing forward adjustments to water, wastewater, reclaimed water rates, we must hold a public hearing, and then council will be asked to adopt the updated fees to be effective for July 1st, 2015. To kind of give a brief overview of the recommendations as we're bringing those forward, in developing the rates, we always want to keep the key objectives we have up here in mind. We set our rates based on a long-term perspective such that the ongoing revenues support the operational and capital requirements. We also are recommending a change to the rate design to recover a greater portion of the wastewater fixed costs through the base charges. We're promoting greater equity among the various user classes. We recommend charging multiplex customers based on unit count rather than on meter side and consolidating the multiplex into one single average use rate. And the recommended rates align our conservation rate tiers with our current customer usage patterns. And lastly, it minimizes, we look to always minimize our customer impacts, and we do this, in this case, we're doing this through small annual adjustments. So what would this mean to our typical residential customer? When we look at the customer bill, you can see here that we're recommending a 2.5% increase for fiscal year '16 and a 2.6% adjustment for 2017. This results in $1.54 and $1.65 on the respective monthly bills of an average residential But even more importantly than that, kind of where do we rank when we look across all of our neighboring communities? We continue to have a very reasonable water, wastewater, and solid waste rate. You can see on here that we're in the lower third of those rates. And when you combine solid waste, water, and wastewater, and do two years of rate adjustments, you can see, I hope you saw that, that we went just up very slightly, and we still maintain our relative position among our communities. And this is not including any other adjustments that our other communities are going to be doing. This is just where we are as of today. We also are recommending that we make some adjustments to our city's reclaimed water rates. Our current rate is $1.25 per thousand gallons, and beginning in fiscal year 2016, we're recommending increasing the rate by five cents each year over the next two years. And this is a similar phase-in that we've done in the past. We have a targeted rate of $1.40 per thousand, so we believe that phasing that in over a couple of years will not only help those customers, but also, you know, we feel that that's an appropriate way to do this. Finally, the rate recommendation that I've outlined will provide all of the necessary resources to ensure the operating and capital requirements of the system are met, and that also that we maintain the fiscal health of the utility funds. So today, we're holding this public hearing, then we'll be asking council to adopt the rates, and the new rates would be effective July 1st, 2015, and July 1st, 2016. With that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, Council, are there any questions for Ms. Gregory? Katie, would you mind explaining the concept of enterprise funds?
Sure. Typically, enterprise funds in a city, in an organization, a city organization, typically what we like to say is, run that like a business. So if you were looking at our utility funds, basically what we're trying to do is set rates so that we recover the cost of providing that service, and that's simply what we're trying to do. It's similar to what you just saw with John Sefton and the pyramid, you know, that 100% cost recovery is what we aim to do for our utility fund. So that's what we mean when we talk about an enterprise fund.
And let me just add to that, too, Mayor Carlet, because we did talk about this in the budget process, but I think it's worth mentioning here as well. One of the policies that we adhere to that's in the council budget policies and financial management policies is that we have what we refer to as strict fund integrity. And by that, we mean that we do not use the utility rate funds for any other purpose than the utility operations themselves. So you will see that some governments do use their utility rate funds or their utility rate surpluses or fund balances for non-utility expenditures. In the city of Peoria, we don't. We keep those funds solely for the purpose that they were collected, and that's the operation of the water or wastewater or solid waste funds.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I declare this public hearing open. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak regarding this agenda item? All right, I have received no comments, and so I will declare this public hearing closed. Council, any further discussion? All right, do I have a motion on item 12R?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and that is to adopt Resolution 2015-53, adjusting the water, wastewater, reclaimed water rates and various administrative fees, making the new rates and fees effective July 1st, 2015, and July 1st, 2016. All right, Council, please vote. It is six to one with Carlo Leoni dissenting. We will move on to item 13R.
And 13R is also an item that the council discussed and directed to be brought forward in the recent budget process, and Katie will present this one as well.
Thank you. Very quickly, I have a short presentation this evening on the recommended changes to the commercial roll-off rates, which is one of the services provided within the city's commercial solid waste fund. The service is intended primarily for the temporary removal of waste or on-demand removal using larger-capacity containers. So these are similar to what you might see at a construction site or when a resident is doing remodeling of their home. The city competes with other private companies in providing this service, and we own a number of the containers that we then rent to customers for a nominal fee. A number of customers, including several city accounts, own their own containers and do not pay the rental fee. When the customer is ready for a pickup, they notify the city for the pickup, then it's dumped at the landfill and either returned for another load or brought back into our inventory. And with each service request, the customer is charged for the amount of waste that's disposed by the ton, so they get a tonnage charge. The city last updated the roll-off rates in fiscal year 2009, and they've been unchanged since that time. And the city, as note, is one of the largest single customer of the service as a significant source of revenue is received from the wastewater utility fund for the removal of solids from the Butler Water Reclamation Facility. In addition, we do take regular loads that are hauled on behalf of the city's streets department in various park locations as needed as well. In our review of the rate structure for the solid waste services, we identified several objectives. We're moving more towards what we would call the business model, that is more similar to a private sector model on this, that relies on revenues from the pole, right? So the emptying and returning, and the charges for tonnage. So we're recommending that the rental fee be discontinued. So instead of charging a monthly rental fee, we discontinue the monthly rental fee, and instead, we'll charge on a per pole with a minimum one pole per month. So the reason for doing this, we're recommending that those utilize that one pole per month during each billing program, and those who are using it more than once a month would not be a a month would not be affected. And likewise, accounts that own their own containers would not be affected by this minimum requirement. The other changes in the rate is to propose an increase on the empty and return fee by $5. And again, we haven't adjusted that rate since 19, or excuse me, 2009. And so that really is basically the cost to recover the service primarily related to the cost of the salaries and the vehicles needed to, to deliver this service. So again, as required by state law, we're required to notice this on the city's website and we notified customers of a potential increase in fees on March 19th and that is 60 days in advance of our review today of the recommended rates. If the council adopts the recommended fee schedule for the roll-off services tonight, the fees would be effective on July 1st. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Gregory? Mr. Finn?
Thank you. So as I understand that right, instead of that monthly rental, we'll just provide that to them at no cost? Is that what I'm understanding? And then we'll have the $200 pole charge per month at a minimum, correct?
Right, exactly.
Okay, and would this be still considered to be an enterprise fund? We're trying to recover our, our costs on this?
Yes, this is. The commercial solid waste fund and the residential solid waste fund both operate as enterprise funds.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 14R, Confirmation of Intergovernmental Affairs Director Thomas B. Atkins, effective June 16th, 2015. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. I'm very pleased to bring to you my selection of Thomas Atkins to be the city's new intergovernmental affairs director. We had a very competitive process that Mr. Atkins rather quickly rose to the top of. We had over 120 applicants. We went through several interviews and Mr. Atkins showed up extremely well in, in all areas, outstanding references, great experience for the position, and I'm very pleased to bring him to you. I'll give you a very brief bio of Mr. Atkins before we ask for your confirmation. He worked for the Arizona House of Representatives from January of 2005 to September of 2010, where he was a legislative analyst responsible for municipal, county, public safety, natural resources and military affairs legislation. After that, he worked for the Arizona Department of Homeland Security where he, from 2000, excuse me, October 2010 to January of 2011, where he led strategic planning and was the legislative liaison for that important department. After that, he worked in the governor's office for Governor Brewer from January of 2011 to March of 2013, where he was policy advisor and deputy director of policy for the governor. After that, he moved to the municipal side and began work for the city of Glendale, where he's been assistant to the mayor since March of 2013. And in that position, he's gained extensive experience with the Maricopa Association of Governments, the regional transportation agencies, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, Westmark, and working with Luke Air Force Base. Thomas has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in public administration, both from Arizona State University, and will begin with the city on June 16th. So I present to you Thomas Atkins.
Well, welcome. Would you like to come up and say anything? How about a little hot seat here? Please.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. I'm so excited for this opportunity to join your team and to help carry out the vision of Mayor and Counsel and working with Mr. Swenson and his team. It's an exciting opportunity. My wife is here this evening supporting me and my family is just thrilled at this great opportunity. So thank you for your endorsement and stand for any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Mr. Leoni?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm, I'm going to support it. Don't, don't get excited. My, my question is, you know, I've been sitting here for 16 years and people come and go, and I often wonder why, why you have so many different jobs. I've been here 16 years in the same job, the same seat, you know, same office. So I'm just curious, why do you, not only you, but everybody that comes here, why do you just keep on jumping, jumping around? Is it the city don't like you or they can't get off the staff like me, you know, things like that? I'm just curious. But you're okay, believe me.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Leoni. I must say, it's been a, a great blessing in my life, a great opportunity as I've grown in my career, starting at the state legislature and, and wanting to grow in, in my profession and get that broad array of experience. I spent six years at the legislature, which I thought was, is a fair amount. Planned to stay at the Arizona Department of Homeland Security longer, but it's an executive agency and when the governor taps you on the shoulder to call you from the bullpen to come out, it was an opportunity too good to pass up. Unfortunately, you know, with governors, their, their terms are, do expire and there's a cleaning of house, so to speak. And so when the opportunity came to join Mayor Wires and the city of Glendale, it was, is a fantastic opportunity. That said, when Peoria's position came open and the great opportunity to join this fantastic city and grow in this position, it was too good to pass up. And so I see myself in this position as long as the city would have me.
I got one more question. What can you do for me with the Glendale Airport, flying over the city of Peoria? Now, I've, I'm getting a, a lot of people calling me up on that and there's nothing that Peoria can really do, but I've talked to the city attorney and it's, it's all in Glendale's hands.
Mr. Leoni, we're off agenda. We can come back to that.
We're getting off the agenda a little bit, Mr. Leoni, but thank you for your comments.
Thomas, welcome to the city. We're very, very happy about all of your past experience. You bring a wealth of that experience and all of that knowledge to the city of Peoria and, and for that, we are grateful. So we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to your wife, too. So with that, is there a motion on item 14R, Confirmation of Intergovernmental Affairs Director?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. It is unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Call to the Public for Non-Agenda Items. I have received no request to speak, so we will move on to reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. I have two brief reports this evening. The first is on our new community gardens program and John Sefton will give a brief overview of this new and exciting program.
Thank you again, Carl, and good evening again, Mayor and Counsel. I do have some exciting to, news to bring forth. We did have a chance at the goal-setting discussion to talk about community gardens and we've had some great work being done. Look at all those kids planting, planting seedlings. So it really is, I thought this, this was a good depiction of what it takes to, to build and to establish the community garden program. So really, how does it fit within what we're doing? The sustainability, sustainability message for, in Peoria is very strong. We have team members like Lisa Estrada, Eric Wilson and a myriad of other departments and staff members that are contributing on a daily basis to the message of sustainability. They contribute strongly. And so how does that position us as a city in the role of gardening? Well, we educate and we demonstrate. And we've had an opportunity through the past several years to create a number of different programs that citizens have taken affinity to and appreciation of and have learned a lot about sustainable actions that they can do at home and that they can participate in as, at a community level. We already do a demonstration garden, the Peoria Zero Escape Garden, the Fusion Garden on the east side of the campus here. And we have begun transition on the west side of that hall to implement a edible garden and demonstration garden as well. So some very good opportunities that are in place. And at that, since that meeting that we had with the goal-setting, Councilmember Hunt brought forward a potential parcel that might work and we did some investigation and we recognized that it is a city-owned parcel right at 83rd and Madison. And we've gone through an extensive evaluation of that site. Water is available. It has been tested from a livability standpoint, so it is a safe location or perceived safe location. And we have also drafted up a potential sighting for some of the garden beds. Now, we would also look to make sure that this is a raised bed garden area and accessible for anybody to come to and most importantly, something that would be aesthetically pleasing and positive for the community and especially the neighborhood. So how do we do that? Are, we're really at that next step, making sure that all of council is aware that this specific piece of land from a zoning standpoint, it's all okay, we're good to go, that there's an endorsement from the, the team here. And then we need the other really important part of community gardening and that's the community. So the operative word there is making sure that others are, are willing to put the work in. And I got creative with some of the words on this promotional piece that will be mailed out to about 500 residents within this area and placed in different areas. But we have announced some very specific and very important community gathering dates on Saturday, May 30th, 9:00 a.m. and Monday, June 15th, 6:00 p.m. We hope to gather as many community members that might be interested, as well as recognize the network of folks that we have as resource. Peoria Uni, or Peoria High School has already signed up with enthusiasm. Heart for the City, Joe Eriques is implementing a garden just in Glendale. He has signed on and said, yes, we're happy to serve in whatever capacity that we can. And the community, the neighbors have stepped up with enthusiasm for us to do something with what was a rock piece of land and turn it into something of value. So we do have on that mailer that's going out, our front desk folks are going to be prepared to organize people to, and send people to our gardening guru, and we have that as an email as well, the garden guru@peoriaaz.gov where we can field that interest. Now, you'll recognize that on that parcel, there's about 19 different locations. We have hundreds of folks that are probably very interested. So we recognize that this may be the first of many as an opportunity. We want to do it right. We want to engage the community, make sure that they are the ones that are truly driving and bringing together the enthusiasm for growing their own vegetables and plants. So we'll do that by recognizing, getting the word out. We'll utilize flyers at the library. We've done the direct mail that'll go out tomorrow, the newspaper. I did notice somebody up there in the corner that might be very interested in this as well. She's been taking pictures. She'll help with getting the word out. And of course, we'll do some email blasts and social media as well. And with that, would be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, John. I, I want to express thanks to you and to Beau for the, and his team for the graphics here and everything. And Lisa, I came to her first because it was sustainability and everybody has been 110% behind this. As far as community, this will embarrass her, but I want to recognize Joanne Couch here from the Women's Club who is making, she's a seamstress and if you, if, if I know you and you have a particular skill in something, I'm going to call on you at some point, okay, to help out. And so she's ma, hold up one, Joanne. She's making little bags, little gardening bags for the Presbyterian preschool children to carry their little plastic gardening tools. And thank you, Joanne. And on the, on the illustration, there was a little horseshoe shape. That's the one that's already designated and they have accepted the preschool children. So they'll be planting their seed in soil now instead of in the Dixie cup to take home where it can die on the kitchen window. So, so, and we have so many other partners already in place. And what I want to really stress is if you are inclined to have a plot of earth of your own to work and you don't have room at your own home, you need to get in touch with us really quickly because some of these beds have already been spoken for. And we probably have about 12 or 15 now that are available. They will go fast. So there's the number, 773-7137. The most important thing is to be there on Saturday, May 30th at 9:00 a.m. to hear the exact parameters of the program and, and what it's going to offer and what's expected of you. Again, thank you, staff, so much.
Thank you. Counselmember Finn?
I just had a quick question. Is it, is it a secure area there that, or is it just completely open all the time for people to come through or how's that work?
Counselmember Finn, there's definitely different models in how gardens are put together. It is not our intention to put a fence around this as a security fence. Studies have shown and experience have, I mean, there's, there's both. And it is our expectation that this neighborhood will embrace and, and endorse and be a part of this gardening area and that our first intention is not to put a fence around it, but have a place where we can secure the tools and that type of need, if you will. But really want it to be an attractive, well-defined, well-structured, well-installed gardening area and then really have the community be the leadership in it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
The, the next item is going to be presented by Beau Larson, our communications director, and it is on some reach, recent featured attention that we received on Zip Trip.
It was a feature, that's for sure. Thank you, Carol. Mayor and Counsel, thank you very much. I wanted to present to you tonight kind of the highlights of a recent event that we had here in Peoria called the Zip Trip. The Office of Communications did a pitch to Fox 10 to get this unique opportunity and it turned out to be just a wonderful thing to highlight the city of Peoria. The, if you look at what we have here with, including all the participants, we had more than 300 people at this event. Fox 10 even told us that it was the most attended show they had ever done. Some of our partners included the Peoria Unified School District. As, they're always an active partner with us. They brought out the Vestancia Elementary Steel Drum Band, over 60 members of that amazing group, as well as the Peoria High School Cheerleaders were on hand. Many of our local businesses and partners had opportunities to promote and, and talk about the services they provide, either for selling or, but how they work with the city. And so it was, it was a great opportunity for many of our businesses. And as you can see, we also had some, a lot of people there that you may recognize in the background. Mayor Carlet was here, Vice Mayor John Edwards, Councilmember Carlo Leoni, and you can also see Joan Leoni there with a granddaughter, I presume, were there to show their support. There was also a picture, but I didn't show it, of the Vice Mayor bouncing in the bouncy house with some kids during one of our live cut-ins. We had a lot of activity on social media through this. We use social media to help draw attention to the event, which helped attract over 300 people, 350 people actually. But throughout the event, we were doing live tweets and Facebook announcements to highlight that this event was going on and we had a lot of positive feedback from the community saying how much they were enjoying watching this on TV. In addition, our very own Jennifer Stein, our marketing and communications manager, even got a personal thank you note from one of the anchors, Andrea Robinson of Fox 10. And Jennifer did an outstanding job, incredible job organizing all of this. I mean, it really was a one-person show for her and she brought all of her years of experience in the television industry as well as in her Office of Communications background to bring together the community partners and as well as the department partners that we have. We had over 27 live segments that were done from Peoria. And now, this doesn't include all the work that happened by Fox 10 themselves going out to Lake Pleasant to do their own package on Peoria. And if you had an opportunity to watch this at home, just the positive comments from Fox 10, they couldn't believe what a great city Peoria is. And that gets shared with all the residents. And Fox 10 is the number one show in the morning market, so we're, we're excited about that. But again, we had 27 live segments at a value of over $750,000. And that value comes from, on average, about $4,000 per 30-second spot. That's kind of how we equate this. And that doesn't count all the promotions that Fox 10 did as well to say that they were going to be in Peoria for their Zip Trip. And so that's, that's something that's hard to, to get and pay for. As I said, over 300 people participated and you can see there a list of many of the partners that Jennifer worked with to come to Peoria. And so Jennifer, again, did an And so Jennifer, again, did an outstanding job. And also, this is about Peoria, so we highlighted as many departments as we could. And our departments are fantastic to work with. Anytime we reach out to them, they're there for us. And I especially want to give thanks to the Department of Community Services, as well as our Public Works Utilities. And I'm going to show a little video here in a little bit that will give you an idea of what all the work city departments did, and a brief highlight of our day. And don't worry, Mayor. So anyway, I'm going to give you a very brief video highlight of what residents and the community saw of Peoria. There is audio there. But as they're setting that up, with those 27 cut-ins, if you were to do a review of what they talked about, it was that Peoria was beautiful. Our facilities were beautiful. They can see why so many people like living here. Andrea Robinson, who happens to be a resident of Peoria, went on and on trying to get Rick D'Amico, the other anchor, to also be a part of living in Peoria, and she was there to convince them. So go ahead and please hit that.
Rick's Center, they've got lakes, they've got volleyball courts, softball fields, and skate parks, everything. It's beautiful.
And you know, they have this Rick's Center over here, it's like full facility. They have a strength training workout gym, they have an indoor running track.
Everything.
Must be satellite difficulties.
Maybe. Maybe you need to move to Peoria. I mean, I don't know. We'll get you sold by the end of that show.
Where are we now? Museum of Modern Art? Taliesin West? No. It's the Rio Vista Recreation Center. It's one of the most beautiful buildings in the valley. We're coming up in just a minute.
This has been terrific. Peoria really turns it out, I'll tell you.
How long have you guys been doing something like this?
This is our sixth year of having this police academy, so every summer during the month of June, we host this police academy for incoming seventh and eighth graders in Peoria.
Do you think it's in the level three? Yeah.
This Fox 10 said one of the funniest things they've ever seen all their time of doing Zip Trip.
And again, Jennifer working with our sanitation crew, the Sanitation Six, as they wanted to call themselves. And we hope this goes viral. I apologize for the poor video quality. I'm not sure what that is, so. But anyway, wanted to give you a brief highlight of the success of our Zip Trip here in Peoria. It really was a lot of fun. It was a lot of work. Jennifer did an outstanding job herding all the cats to make this happen, if you saw her running all over the place. But we really appreciate all the support that you gave in coming out, and also, the residents really enjoyed it. So it's exciting. We hope to do another Zip Trip sometime, but like I said, this is kind of a rare occurrence. We worked really hard to get them to come to Peoria, and we think it was definitely a home run to follow up on the spring training analogy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. And thank you, Jen. A lot of hard work went into that, I know.
And it showed, and it showed. I mean, we were on TV all morning, and there were so many different activities, and I absolutely loved the Sanitation Six. And Willie, you know Willie, he loves recycling, and to be standing out there, you know, with a completely choreographed dance around recycling bins, you have to love that. You know, who does that? And Jen, I think you choreographed that entire thing, didn't you? So kudos to you guys.
Years of dance lessons coming.
Great.
I will send each of you a link to that full video, so you can have that and actually see in its fine quality.
Yeah. It was great. All right, thank you.
That's it for my report.
Okay. We will move on to reports from City Council. Councilmember Leoni?
Few things. At the City Clerk Week and Celebration we had, that they had, and it was the, I don't know if it was the first one, or they had one before, but I went to this one here, and it was just great. They had punch and cake, and you get to meet some of the staff, and you're one of the tour of the City Clerk's office. And it was just great, and I think they should do it every year. Also, Peoria Police Volunteer Appreciation Event, that was also great. All these young volunteers who've been there quite a while for the police department, they did a great job, and I want to say thank you to the chief. He also put this together, and it was, come on, just great. And I want to congratulate all those young volunteers. Also, on Wednesday, they had a luncheon for the staff, and I was one of the service, and I want to thank all the staff people that was there that helped out. It was just a great event. I don't know where all these people were coming from, but there was a lot of them I didn't even know. But I think they had a sign outside, free lunch, but it was great. The staff did a great job, especially Katie, who was always on my case, but we did a great, they did a great job, and I want to congratulate them. I don't want to mention anybody's name, but it was the whole staff. Also, on Thursday at 6 o'clock in the morning, they had breakfast at the MOC, and again, the staff was there, and it was just a great, great day for the city of Peoria, for the staff. I know Carl Swanson put this on, he puts it on every year, and I just want to say thank you to the staff for doing a tremendous job, putting this together, and I'm sure that everybody was happy with the lunch and the breakfast. The other thing, as Bo says on Fox 10, I was also there. It was a great turnout, and you saw the film, and you probably saw my wife with one of my great-grandkids, that was number 14, and it scattered all over the United States. But it was just a great event, and I know Bo and his assistant did a great job. I guess they were there about 5:00 in the morning. But if they're going to get there to get coffee and donuts, you better get there early, because I got there and all the donuts and coffee was gone. So if they're going to get the coffee and donuts, make sure you get there early. I also want to mention yesterday, and I want to thank the chief mentor to invite me to the promotion of four officers. I'm going to congratulate them again. And Police Recording Supervisor Heather Berg, Lieutenant Jonathan Kemp, Lieutenant Lee Ray, and Commander Bruce Wallace. I'm going to thank them again for getting the promotion, and I want to thank the chief for inviting me. It was just a great event. The last thing I want to mention, don't forget the end of the month, on May 30, at Cheyenne Elementary School, 11806 North 87th Avenue, we get another shreddathon. The other one went along so great that I decided to put another one on up in that area. So if you have any stuff that you want to get rid of with your name and phone number and social security number, please bring them on down, because they're important. Thank you. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. First of all, I just, I'm just brimming over with excitement. This is just such a great place to work and such a great place to live. All these amazing things we've seen tonight. I mean, just to work with this staff, and welcome, John. I guarantee you are going to love it here. You really have landed on fertile ground and an exciting place to be. I feel it every day, but then when it culminates in a night like this of really celebration, it just really brings it home. How fortunate we are to live here, and how fortunate I feel to serve the city. Earlier, actually, not this week, last week, John Edwards and I went to Peoria High School during lunch hour, and we took pizza so that the natives would be nice. And we just sat and listened to a bunch of really great kids. We didn't really have a lot to say. We just wanted to kind of take the pulse of what these high school kids were thinking. And there was only one subject that they wanted to talk about, and that was that they are having a hard time finding jobs. They want to work. These were juniors and seniors. They want to work. They're having a really hard time finding summer jobs. So if any of you, and these were just first-rate kids, so if any of you have jobs that might be available for the summer, then you can get in touch with Jan Delgado over at Peoria High School, and she can get you someone. The other exciting thing that I did a week before last was, I went to Peoria's BioInspire campus, and oh my, what a treat. I am not a science person. That's not my paradigm. I was an English teacher. But this is so amazing. These incubator programs with the brightest of the bright young people inventing and getting boost from City of Peoria and from some other funding grants, to be able to pursue their invention and taking it all the way to, through the patenting process, and then all the way to being able to sell, to market that product. And summer's so amazing, I don't know how anybody thinks of it. I do want to send my condolences to J.D. Campbell's family. J.D. is one of the pioneers here in Peoria. He passed away just passed about a week and a half ago. And certainly, he has impacted this city. I think we all remember him coming before council with his zoning issues and wishes. And he certainly made a strong impact on my life, and just condolences to his family. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
No comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Ben Sparker?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to welcome Mr. Atkins. Thank you for being here today. And certainly, I have no doubt that your career path has, will ultimately be Peoria's good fortune. So we are glad to have you here, and you will find, like I did, how wonderful the staff here is. I was not able to attend the National Public Service Recognition Events, but I would like to say publicly how proud I am of Peoria and all of the staff here, and how wonderful they've been to me, and I'm sure you'll experience the same thing. Also, quickly, want to remind everyone that Pure Firefighters Charities is having their car show this Saturday from 8:00 to 2:00 at the Peoria Sports Complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patena?
Vice Mayor Edwards? Thank you, Mayor. Like Mr. Leoni, I did, was able to participate in the breakfast and the lunch. And Carl, I want to tell you that the staff did a phenomenal job in getting this together, and all the employees really looked forward to this event. And so, kudos to you and your staff. Continue the good work, and hopefully, this becomes not just twice a year, or maybe once a year, maybe it becomes more. So I think it's something that they really look forward to, and we need to accommodate that. So, thank you. I did participate at the Fox Morning Show over at Rio Vista, but what you didn't mention was the fact that I was in the Slurpee or Slushy contest with one of the, with one of the people from Channel 10. Luckily, I didn't drink too much, but the young gentleman or the young lady that I was up against ended up getting brain freeze and had to go down because she drank so quickly. So that's why I didn't do that piece of it. That afternoon, Councilman Hunt and I did attend Peoria High School for the last luncheon of the year. This is the fifth time that I've hosted lunch with youth advisory members and selected members of the school. And so what I challenged them to do is, the youth advisory members have to go out and find five of their friends to come to lunch, and we supply the pizza. So we were able to hit five schools this year. I continue to do it. I will continue to do it next year. The ideas and the suggestions that come to these, from these kids is just phenomenal. Some of the things that we don't even think about, they have questions about. So with Councilmen Hunt and Councilman Patena, I look to expand it with the other council members, just so that they know they have a voice within the city of Peoria. So I continue to do that. And then again, congratulations, Thomas. You're a great asset, and I know you're going to do a phenomenal job here. And lastly, I'd just like to wish everybody a safe holiday and be safe out there, especially if you're out at the lake this weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And there being no further business, we are adjourned, and we are going to reconvene as the Vistancia Community Facilities District Board. Will the clerk please note the roll? This is the final call to submit speaker request forms, and I have no speaker request forms in front of me? Yes, I do? Okay. Thank you. You will be recognized at the appropriate time. The first item is the Consent Agenda, consists of the minutes of the April 21st meeting. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the board please vote? It's unanimous. All right. We will move on to item 19R, Public Hearing, District Budget and Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2016. Staff report, please.
Brent Mattingly will make the staff report.
Thank you, Carl. Tonight, the board is holding a public hearing, which is item 19R on your agenda. That'll be followed by a separate agenda item 20R, which is a resolution considering approval of the final Vistancia CFD budget and ordering a tax levy for fiscal year 2016. The final budget before you provides for an operating and capital budget of $18.8 million. It maintains the current $2.10 CFD tax rate for debt service. It anticipates those taxes to be generated at approximately $2.6 million, and it estimates that the developer's contribution for debt service in the upcoming year to be approximately $2.8 million per their obligations under the standby contribution agreements. Staff recommends adoption of resolution, following the public hearing, I'm sorry, Mayor, following the public hearing as your next agenda item, staff would recommend adoption of resolution 2015-02 that approves the final budget and orders a tax levy for next year.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions for Mr. Mattingly? All right. I declare this public hearing open, and I do have a request to speak from a Mr. Samuel Paparazzo. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Samuel Paparazzo, 30764 North 126th Drive. Own a residential property located within the Vistancia Community Facilities District. Having had the opportunity to review the proposed operating budget for 2016, I have several questions to ask of staff.
Okay. Is there someone, Mr. Mattingly, will we be answering these at this point? Do you have somebody representing? We will answer them later. How do you want to handle that?
Probably depends on the nature of the question. Some may require me to do some research and follow up. Others, I may have the answer in front of me this evening.
Okay. Mr. Paparazzo, would you like to just state them? I see all of your attachments here.
Right.
And it appears as if you have quite a lot of questions. Would you like to ask them of Mr. Mattingly?
Well, yes, let me present them, and then we'll just go from there. The first question was, under reserves, line item one reads, "Tax Levy at 30 cents per hundred dollars of limited assessed valuation." The question is, would you provide some scenarios when a 30-cent additional tax rate could be applied?
Sure. So the legal documents allow the Community Facilities District to assess an additional 30 cents operations and maintenance tax. The city of Peoria has never done that, and this budget does not intend to do that.
But I guess that didn't, that'll, you know, you didn't.
Legally, we're allowed to do it.
No, I was asking for scenarios when that could come up.
To support operations and maintenance expenses of the district.
Can you give an example of an operational maintenance expense?
Auditing costs that are paid for by the developer under our agreements today.
Okay. Under revenues, line item two reads, "Amount expected to be paid from standby contribution agreement." My initial question is, how do I go about obtaining a copy of the standby contribution agreement?
I can provide that, too.
Okay. Should I? Well, my email is on the speaker request.
I haven't seen your email, so I probably could have given you a lot of this ahead of time, but if you'd send me the email, I'd be glad to respond to it.
Okay. On the city's website, there's a page dedicated to community facility districts, and on the page, there's a link to a document titled, "Overview of the Vistancia Community Facilities District." the page, there's a link to a document titled, "Overview of the Vestancia Community Facilities District." On Pages 3 and 4, the overview of the Vestancia Community Facilities District document, under the subheading, "How Vestancia CFD Debt Service Obligations Are Paid." Number one, standby contribution agreement, the following sentence appears, "Due to the downturn in the real estate market and the slower development and absorption of homes, these annual developer payments are extending beyond the timeframe initially projected in the developer's financial estimates." My question is, what was the developer's initial projected timeframe for the payments of their obligation under the standby agreement?
I'd have to do some research and see if I have that in my office. I don't know that off the top of my head. That was dated back to the year 2000 approximately.
So that the terms wouldn't be outlined in the standby agreement?
Those estimates would not have been in the standby, but might be in some other documents.
Okay. On Page 4, the Vestancia Community Facilities District document, under the subheading, "Change in Ownership of the Undeveloped Land in Vestancia," the following language appears, "The original parties to the Vestancia development included a number of limited liability companies, including Shea Sunbelt Pleasant Point LLC, Shea Sunbelt Pleasant Point Investors LLC, and J.F. Shea Company, Inc. In late 2009, a further restructuring of the ownership occurred, whereby Vestancia Land Holdings LLC, a subsidiary of Stratford Land out of Dallas, Texas, acquired most of the ownership of the undeveloped land. They also assumed financial responsibility for the prior development obligations." My question is, is my understanding correct, then, that Sunbelt Holdings no longer has any debt service obligations originating from their original venture partnership formed with Shea Homes?
I couldn't answer that specifically. The primary obligation is Stratford's, and there are some backup agreements primarily with the J.F. Shea Company and Shea Homes Limited Partnership that are also obligated to make those payments should Stratford not make them.
I asked that question because my HOA, up until last year, has been under the control of Sunbelt Holdings Employee Control Board of Directors, so that's why I was asking that question.
I'm not familiar with the HOA and how it's governed. It's outside of this district.
No, I'm inquiring about Sunbelt Holdings and their debt obligation.
They're a party to the original agreements.
So you really can't answer that question? Okay. Under expenses, line items, under expenses, line item one reads, "Funding the insurance deductible with a budget and amount of $250,000." Would you please clarify what this line item is in regard to?
Sure. Under some of the legal documents, if there were a significant insurance-eligible event out there that had deductible that the insurance company would not pay, the developers obligated or these parties are obligated to cover that deductible amount, which was $250,000 before the insurance coverage would kick in.
So basically, it's a budgeted expense, but it's a contingency item in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And my last question is, for the prior three fiscal year operating budgets, the depository payment series 2002, 2005, and 2006 bonds were included in calculating the total appropriation for full year. Why then was the depository payment excluded from the total appropriation amount for the proposed full-year 2016 operating budget?
I can't specifically answer that. I can say that if those depository agreements were called upon, we have the authority to make the adjustments to expend those funds as necessary, whether it's in this adopted budget or not.
But you can't really answer the question. Who, I guess, developed the budget? Would you be able to answer that question?
Well, my staff developed the budget, so I'm trying to answer that. I don't recall why we didn't include it this year. That probably answers your question. I went on to explain that regardless of whether it's in this budget or not, should the event arise where we need to expend those funds, we have the ability to get the authorization to do so. So I'm hoping that makes you feel more comfortable.
Well, it doesn't really didn't address the question, but I will follow up, as you suggested, with these questions. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Paparazzo, you are welcome at any time to contact Mr. Mattingly and his department and sit down with him in a place and time where it's more conducive.
I did last June, I spent a few over an hour with him, and I made several recommendation proposals. In fact, I had addressed this board previously two times in 2014.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments on this item, I declare this public hearing closed. Board, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
So it's the resolution, next item.
All right. So the next item is item number 20R. That is the final budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 2016. Okay, and your presentation included...
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay. So now, do we have a motion on item 20R?
Moved in second.
Moved in second. Okay, Board, please vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And so the next item on the agenda is called to the public for non-agenda items, and I do have another request to speak from Mr. Paparazzo.
Yes, Samuel Paparazzo, 30764 North 126th Drive. To my earlier comments, when I came before this board on August 27th of last year, one of the things I stated was that while the city has no legal obligation to its bonds, the property owners located within the Vestancia Facilities District do have a financial stake in its long-term success, and therefore, they should be given a greater voice and be invited to participate in the process. In support of that statement, I'd like to share just three brief excerpts from recent news articles specific to the VCFD and the City of Peoria. The first news article is regarding a 4/21/15 press release titled, "Fitch Affirms Vestancia Community Facilities District's General Obligation Bonds at A-, Stable Outlook." In the press release, Fitch identifies eight variables used in assigning its A-minus bond rating, of which two were of particular interest to me as follows. Limited resource base: The A-minus rating reflects the district's still-limited tax base; more than half of the debt service is provided by developer contributions. Payer concentration risk: Although the bonds are secured by an unlimited ad valorem tax pledge, the board is elected to maintain the property tax rate at $2.10 per $100 of taxable value, which is below the rate needed to pay the full debt service. Absent developer contributions, the tax rate would rise from the promised $2.10 to approximately $4.70 per $100 of taxable value based on recent taxable assessed valuation levels. The two other recent news article excerpts are regarding the 4/21/15 press release titled, "Fitch Affirms Peoria, Arizona: General Obligation Bonds at AA+ improvement District Bonds at AA Outlook Stable." In an April 29 Northwest Valley News published article titled, "Peoria Receives Good News from Bond Rating Service," Carl Swanson, city manager, is quoted as follows regarding the Fitch AA+ rating. "We are pleased that Fitch ratings has again affirmed Peoria's high credit ratings. These ratings underscore the city's continued financial strength, which is a reflection of our adherence to sound financial management policies and practices. It also indicates the strengths of our growing economy." In a May 8 Peoria Times published article titled, "Peoria Bonds Rank Among the Highest in the Valley," Brett Mattingly, the city's chief financial officer, is quoted as follows regarding the Fitch AA+ rating. "Many years ago, the city council adopted sound financial principles. Following those principles has resulted in the city's strong financial position. Creating and maintaining good fund balances is an example of those financial principles. The strong bond ratings are an indicator of the city's strong financial management. Good bond ratings are one indication to our citizens that the city's finances are well-managed." My question to the board is then, shouldn't the 12,000 city residents of Vestancia expect that the same sound financial management policies, practices, and principles are applied as well in the case of the Vestancia Community Facility District bonds? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Having no further comments. And we've already voted, haven't we? Okay. All right. We've gone to call to the public. So there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned, and we are reconvened for the Vestancia West Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Will the clerk please note the roll? Final call to submit speaker request forms, and I have none. Mr. Mattingly?
So, I'm sorry, I think...
We have item 22R. Public hearing.
I think we need to vote on the consent agenda.
You also have consent agenda before that, I'm sorry. There's also a consent agenda.
Yeah, Mayor Carlat, I think we need to address the consent agenda for this one. Sorry.
I apologize. It's the minutes from the April 21st meeting. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Board, please vote. It's unanimous. Now, we will move on to item 22R. This is a public hearing, District Budget and Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2016.
And Brent, of course, will present this one as well.
So similar to the last item, there are actually two agenda items this evening that I'll, the staff report really applies to both. The first is public hearing, no action, and then the second will be a resolution for your consideration. The final budget before you this evening provides for an operating capital budget of $113,500. It anticipates a small private placement bond sale to establish the $2.10 tax rate, which you would, also by your actions this evening, would be authorizing for this upcoming year. It does anticipate the taxes would be enough to pay for the debt service on that bond offering, and the staff recommends adoption, following the public hearing, of resolution 2015-03, that it would approve the final budget and order that tax levy for fiscal year 2016.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I declare this public hearing open. Any member of the public would like to speak? And I have no comments, and so I declare this public hearing closed. Board, any further discussion? I would just like to reiterate that there is no tax increase for the Vestancia West or Vestancia Community Facilities Districts. Is that correct?
That's correct. Actually, the tax rate would be the first time for the new Vestancia West Community Facilities District.
Okay, and it is the same as the Vestancia Community Facilities District. Okay, so there is no action on that. Did I close that public hearing? If I didn't, it's closed now. So, item 23R. This is final budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 2016. We've already received a staff report on that. Is there a motion on item 23R?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Board, please vote. And it is unanimous. The next item is called to the public on non-agenda items. I have no request forms. There being no further business, we are adjourned.